This is ten o'clock on certain clocks and not on others yet. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all their special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And I'll start off with any from close, any action from closed session, County Council?
No.
Okay. So at this point, we'll go ahead and stand and do a flag salute, and if County Council can lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Lord God, who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'll ask if there's any introduction of new employees at this point. Okay, seeing no introductions at this point, we will go into... So I'll request any deletions, corrections, or additions from the board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Corrections or additions? Okay, so we're gonna go into, receive other brief reports or announcements relative to the County of Delmar programs and projects, progress of the two-by-two committees, goal committees, and/or board and staff travel training reports. So at this point, I will start with Supervisor McNamara.
Well, that's good, because mine is very brief, being so I haven't been here, if some of you haven't noticed. I've missed a couple of meetings. For health reasons, I'd like to thank all those that kept me in their thoughts and prayers during that time, and just wanted to let you all know that I am feeling better than I have in a long time. I'm back and raring to go again, so, thank you very much. I do want to announce that I had a great niece born on April 2nd, and I just had to mention her because she was ten pounds, four ounces.
Wow.
And since she's afro. So that's about all I have to announce right now. If anybody wants to know anything more personal, they can contact me personally.
All righty then. Go on to Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Well, as we all did, we had a Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority meeting after our meeting two weeks ago. It seems to be plugging right along. I had a Nortech teleconference meeting. We still, we're, I get, we finally figured out, I guess, the plan for getting the WIB makeup, which is the Workforce Investment Board, on how that's, how those, the criteria for meet, meeting qualifications have changed, so therefore we have to change how we're, how the makeup of that works, and I think we've got that figured out. That'll happen at our next meeting, which is the end of this month, I think, the 26th. Had a future facilities meeting. Most, mostly had to do with Ed Fulton prioritizing his maintenance plan for county buildings and parks. I requested that maybe he change a few things on priorities, and he's gonna bring that back to the board, and hopefully we'll approve that and get that moving. Had a couple of port meetings, crab fishing port meetings, and then went down to the Dungeon of Crab Task Force meeting. That will be our last meeting for two years, so we won't meet again for two more years. Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. There was a presentation by Sixto on Fly Crescent City. You've probably heard on the radio, all the advertising for the, for flying out of Crescent City. Missed that, most of that presentation, but I heard it was very good. And then we discussed either going to a design build or a design bid build on the terminal building, and we're going to save that, I think. Work plan is gonna be able to do either one of those things when we decide the most beneficial way to go. At least that was my understanding. Had a local mental health board meeting. We had a public hearing. We accepted the update of the three-year plan and approved that plan. And I went to the preschooling meeting in Gasky for the Forest Service travel management plan. It was very well attended. Lot of good information there, and the thing that I was happiest about was the references to coordinating with the county. They seemed to be on the same page, so we will be going further, and that was it for me.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Finnegan.
Brief report has already stated we had the solid waste meeting after our last Board of Supervisors meeting that we all attended, and had a tri-agency meeting. Good report, good movement on the economic development front, and talked also, then we had the airport JPA meeting. Jerry did a good job on there, and I know that if you've been listening at all to the newspaper, excuse me, listening to the radio, as well as seeing the full-page color ad in the newspaper, you can see that the marketing plan has been kicked off. There will be bill boards to go with that, as well as contests and whatnot. So participate in those contests and those promotions as they come available. And had the opportunity to speak to different groups, since it is the political season, which is always nice. You take for granted that everybody knows all the good work this board's been doing, and guess what? They don't. And history goes to those who read it or say it, so get out there and let them know what's going on. And then basically took a little bit of extra time to spend time with my youngest daughter during Christmas, or, excuse me, Easter vacation. I all, I am mixed up, aren't I? Anyway, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I had a meeting, did agenda review prior to the meeting here. Met with Monty Mendenhall with Pacific Power, and we went over again, touched the issue on the Underground Utilities Rule 20. I've gotten, basically got the information again to see if something could be done along that line, and Monty's always very easy. He was grateful for the county's effort or support in getting those power lines fixed in Klamath, and supposedly things are gonna get done, and we'll, you know, wait and see. There are negotiations with parks right now. Attended the tri-agency meeting with Supervisor Finnegan. Also attended the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, and I do need to thank Supervisor Hemmingson, who's the chair, is that, that agenda is so much easier and makes much more sense, and you can actually get things done during the meeting, so I appreciate streamlining that agenda, 'cause it was ridiculous how long some of that other stuff took place. So, other than that, we had a discussion, and I don't think we've set the date yet, but the possibility of having a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners from Curry County, and that would take place in Smith River. And I don't think we've set a date yet, but there are a lot of similarities and commonalities and issues that we both face, and I think it's been a long time since we've done that. It may have been five or six years, so...
The 30th.
What's that?
30th.
Oh, April.
And Saturday.
Okay. Is it April or May?
April.
Okay, so I stand corrected. It's been set for April 30th, so, you know, it will be in Smith River, so I would encourage you can make it out there. It's a good time for us to, to share some stuff and see if we can work together on that, continue to work together. Also celebrated Easter with family and friends, and, you know, at this time, we, we had a passing this, this last week, and I take a moment to remember Eric Epperson, a teacher, coach, mentor, and a friend to so many, and a man whose recent passing will have a lasting impact on those that were fortunate to have known him. It is with great sadness, sadness that we accept his passing, and with much happiness that we remember all the positive things that Eric accomplished in his life. We send our thoughts and prayers to his family, including Eric's aunt, Supervisor Martha McClure. Eric will be missed, so if you could please join me, with me in a moment of silent and recollection, uh, recollection, recollection. Okay, at this point, we are gonna go on to receive a brief report from County Administrative Officer Jay Serena.
If I could interrupt, just before I forget the, the thought, I would like to remind everyone today is the final day for paying your property taxes, so get in there.
Thank you. Jay?
I'm glad you reminded me. We've been working on a few things in administration and a few things in response to what the board has seen in the past, but just to give a brief report, we are currently preparing for our spring budget meetings, which last now through at least October, and this year, probably considerably longer with the November election. So all of the recommended or requested budgets will come up, and then there will be a recommendation to the board on June 30th or before June 30th. Currently received a request from Caltrans to sign a letter. It's called a 4F letter. It's basically a coordination letter that would deal with work on 197 at the Ruby One site, I think everybody's aware of, for the SDAA projects. There's a couple of sites on 197 that need to be dealt with, and one of those affects the entrance into Ruby Van Devenor Park, and there's actually a grade change, so they would be changing that, repaving that area, and they would need to use our parking spaces, about three parking spaces to stage for three days out of the 90-day project. So, once I have that reviewed and have County Council review it, we'll likely sign that and send that off to them so they can then proceed. It will, I, I believe it'll help in a couple of different ways, but shouldn't have any real effect on Ruby Van Devenor Park. Unfortunately, that access is a tough access, but it is what it is, because it's an old park. I think everybody's aware that we recently had a storm event for Delmar County, where we received a lot of rain. There was a minimal activation of the County Emergency Operations Center. I think I'll have Cindy show up at the next meeting, give you a better report than this one, but essentially what it was to respond to concerns with localized flooding, the potential for flooding in Klamath, was projected over top Highway 101 at one point, and fortunately it didn't crest at that height, so we didn't have that problem. But we did have quite a bit of localized flooding. The minimal activation meant that there was about a half a dozen to 10 people at the EOC answering phone calls through a hotline, dealing with the issues that did come in, and helping direct the public to resources, essentially sandbag, sandbagging, and things of that nature, and people that could help them with their private property. The second part of that day was power outage due to wind and saturated soils. I think everybody had seen the report of the trees down across Highway 101 in Klamath. There were other trees down, obviously the one on North Bank Road to the gentleman's house. Considerable amount of loss of power to people. I think there's about 9,000 that PP&amp;L restored. Did a very good job, report from PP&amp;L. They did an extraordinary job to get those backing up, along with Klamath fire that responded, because the highway was closed. So there was a lot of logistical issues. Delmar ambulance had to call in assistance from the south, so they had that covered. Law enforcement from the south. There's a lot of different things that people don't realize happen when you have a highway closed, even for a short amount of time. And like I said, I'll have Cindy come in and report a little more detail than what actually happened and what events were out there. We are currently in negotiations with the Sheriff Employees Association. The admin manual that we've been talking about for so many years is in the review stage and should be before the board here. I'm gonna say within 60 days. I've said that before, but this time I think it's gonna happen. And we received one bid on our fire damage for the Manual Arts Building. We'll be negotiating with that contractor. We had four, I believe, through the mandatory walkthrough, and only bid, one bid received. We'll be discussing that one.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff. Okay, at this point, we will go to consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any public comment on items on the consent agenda only? Okay, seeing no public comment on it. Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and approved. We had three proclamations in that, so let's go ahead and start with proclamation, the item number two, Healthy Counties, Healthy Families, National County Government Month. Supervisor Finnegan, if you would.
Sure. National County Government Month, April 2012. Healthy counties, healthy families. Whereas the nation's 3,068 counties provide a variety of essential public services to communities, serving more than 300 million Americans. And whereas the County of Delmar and all counties take seriously their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in sensible and cost-effective ways. Whereas county governments are essential to America's healthcare system and are unique in their responsibility to both finance and deliver health services through public hospitals, clinics, local health departments, long-term care facilities, mental health services, and substance abuse treatment, and coverage programs for the uninsured. And whereas National Association of Counties President Lenny Eliason is encouraging counties to promote healthy living and lifestyle choices in communities across the county, across the country, through his 2011-2012 Healthy Counties Presidential Initiative. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote their own programs and services to the public. Now therefore be it resolved, the Delmar County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April 2012 as National County Government Month, and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Passed and adopted this 10th day of April. Signed by Chair Mike Sullivan.
I don't think we have anybody on the county to accept that one at all.
Nobody here from the county?
Gary, how about you? You want this?
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. The second proclamation, item number three, Sexual Assault Awareness, Awareness Month. Supervisor Hemmingson has that.
Thank you. It's the proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, County of Delmar, State of California declaring the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexualized violence affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all gender, excuse me, of all genders, from all racial, racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, with public health and social justice implications for every person in Delmar County. And whereas staff and volunteers, volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour services to survivors and their significant others to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not revictimised. And whereas NCRCT encourages every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention, education, and awareness, raising programs throughout Delmar and Humboldt Counties. And whereas no one person, organization, or community can eliminate sexualized violence on their own, but can through collaboration and partnership. Work together towards social justice for all. Now therefore we, the Delmar County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of two, of April 2012 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and reaffirm our commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence. Passed and adopted this 10th day of April 2012.
Do we have someone here to accept the proclamation?
We want to start by thanking you for your ongoing support of the North Coast...
You might, you might bring the mic down a little bit.
Sorry. We want to start by thanking you for your ongoing support of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and for proclaiming April as both Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month. It takes an entire community, communities a commitment to end violence. As leaders, you set the tone for others. My name is Liz.
And I'm Esther.
And we're both advocates and prevention educators with the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. NCRCT has been in existence for 38 years, with an office here in Crescent City since 1988. We serve people of all gen, all ages and genders, who have been directly or indirectly affected by any form of sexualized violence, regardless of when the trauma occurred. We may hear from someone who was raped today, or we may hear from someone who was harmed decades ago and is now reaching out for support. Because sexual abuse often happens in the context of child abuse, we provide services to children and their families and work towards the prevention of all forms of child malt treatment. Because it often happens in the context of domestic violence, we work with local allies towards ending all forms of intimate partner abuse and provide services to those who have experienced the violence. In addition to a wide range of free and confidential intervention services, we provide primary prevention programs to children as young as preschool, throughout elementary, junior, and senior high, as well as college and other adult, adult programs, including train your, trainings for professionals who serve families.
Proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month is important because one in three women, one in 11 men, one in four girls, and one in six boys will experience some form of sexual abuse. Because it takes an entire community to address and end violence, raising awareness about the issue is essential. During April, as you will see on your poster you received, there are a number of events, and we would like to highlight a few of them. Local folks are, for the first time in Delmar County, presenting the Design of Monolons, which is benefiting several local organizations and tribes. The next performance is at Elk Valley on the 14th, and we encourage you to check it out. Also, April 25th is International Jeans for Justice Day, which is a day to wear jeans to show your support for all survivors and break the myths that continue to blame and revictimise those who have been harmed. You have in your packet a sticker and information, and we hope that you will join us in observing the day. Thank you for your commitment and the work, to the work of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team, and to our vision, a world without violence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're gonna go on to proclamation for Safety Seat Checkup Week. Supervisor McNamara?
Yes, this is a proclamation declaring April 15th through the 21st, 2012, as Safety Seat Checkup Week. Whereas the number one preventable cause of death and injury of children and young adults is automobile collision. And whereas more than 90 child passengers under 15 are killed, and more than 10,000 injured in automobile collisions in California each year. And whereas 71% of small children killed in crashes would be alive today if they had been properly restrained in child safety seats. Whereas 45% of injuries to child occupants ages four to eight could be prevented with the use of booster seats. And whereas more than 90% of child safety seats are used incorrectly. And whereas California's child safety seat usage rate reached a record high of 95% in 2010, up from 90%, 90.9% in 2009. Whereas the state of California requires that all occupants be properly restrained in safety seats or safety belts with children in the backseat until at least the age of eight. Whereas the state of California requires all occupants of motor vehicles to be buckled up correctly on every ride. Whereas crash-tested safety seats are moderately priced and widely available for purchase at retail stores and at low cost from safety seat distribution programs throughout California. Whereas Safety Belt Safe USA has been dedicated for more than 30 years to protecting children from injury or death while being transported in a motor vehicle. Now be it proclaimed by the Delmar County Board of Supervisors that April 15th through the 21st, 2012 be declared Safety Seat Checkup Week. Passed and adopted this 10th day of April 2012.
Thank you, Supervisor McNamara.
Yes, do we have anyone to accept this today?
Anyone here for that? Okay, I'll have to take a look at the proclamations going forward here. Okay, going on to budget transfers.
Supervisor, Chair Sullivan, rather, you know, since we're going so quick, most of the people here have access to an agenda, and I guess if you go online, you do. Most of the people that are gonna watch this on TV have no idea what we did with our consent agenda, and just to give you a real quick idea of, of the good stuff that we do that you don't hear about, we had some pass-through funding through OES that went down to the city that we didn't use as for a backup generator for the sewage treatment plant. We putting forth documents for the design of the Hunter Creek Bridge, the Hobbs Wall Trail, submitting an application for that to get that done with a bike path, and also an MOU with the Resignee Rancheria regarding roads. So all kinds of great stuff that happens that we may go quickly by, because we're, we know, but maybe you don't know. Just thought I'd pass it along.
Well, and it's so many times that things have been through here, at least once, maybe twice...
Oh, absolutely.
...to get through, so by the time it gets to the consent agenda, it's usually been well discussed, so...
Right. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. At this point, I'll entertain a budget tra, a motion to entertain the...
Move to approve.
Item 12 and 13?
Second.
Is that 12 and 13?
Yes.
Okay.
Zero five and zero six.
Okay, so we had a motion, a second, to pass item 12 and 13, which are budget transfers for the District Attorney's Office. Any public comment? Okay, Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, we are still short of public comment, so we are gonna go to item 16. Approve the fiscal year 2012, 13 road projects listed as submitted by the road superintendent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wait, do we, we don't wanna hear a speech from the road superintendent?
Sure we do.
Yeah.
We want him and Jeff speak.
I'll give him a little speech, and that's that all you people that live off of railroad from Parkway to Blackwell, it's gonna be widened with bike paths and overlays, and it's gonna look just like the second half of it here come this summer.
Well, we have some improvements that we wanna do to it, so it'll, it'll definitely be a plus, so...
Excellent. Any ones you wanna highlight in particular, or...
Well, I just wish we had more money to do more, so, but no, it's, we just kinda went through and, and kinda selected some roads that were on our pavement management, and some are worse than others, but they all, they all need a little attention, so...
Excellent. Thanks, Jeff.
While you're up there, Jeff, I would like to take a minute to thank you for your response to, I, I don't know about the other supervisors, but every time I have called you in regards to any issues with site distance, that, anything blocking the views at intersections and that type of thing, you have responded faster than I would ever have expected anybody to respond, and I really appreciate that, because then it makes me look good. So you, you make me look...
I, I thank you on the behalf of the road department and the employees at the road department also, 'cause without them, we couldn't be able to do that, so...
Thank you.
Well, that's the, the amount of time and the amount of personnel that you dedicate to the slides in Klamath and keeping those roads open is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Good job, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Right on.
Okay, any public comment on the roads presented? Okay, seeing no public comment.
What is important that Jeff didn't talk about is where some of that money comes from, and over about a million dollars a year from the Secure Rural Schools, and that is, has expired. And because the transportation bill, while it was in the Senate bill, they didn't pass that bill. They just did a 90-day extension. So there is no extension for Secure Rural Schools. We're still fighting for a five-year extension and tying it to forest management rules, but for right now, it is incumbent upon all of us to be talking to all the elected officials in Washington to make sure the Secure Rural Schools is again funded, so we can keep doing the work with the roads, as well as the schools. Half of that goes to schools.
Yeah, it's over a million dollars for schools, a million dollars for roads on a yearly basis. And without that funding in place, you're going to see a lot more potholes pop up, and it's, you know, the, the feds really, I think, have a responsibility, since they're the largest property owner in the community, to continue to fund that, so.
It's going to make our prioritization much tougher.
Okay, Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, go to item 17, because we're still short on public comment. Adopt a resolution of intent to vacate a portion of the county's right-of-way over Surf Sound Court and set the matter for a public hearing as requested by the Deputy Director of Engineering Roads. Do we have staff?
Yep.
This is a short segment of road that leads up into nautical heights, and they are trying to put a-
Tina, do you want to talk into the mic here?
They're trying to put a gate up, and there is no adequate position for that gate unless they move it forward into our right-of-way. So, we are asking to vacate that portion of the right-of-way only for the roadway purposes. It will still remain an easement for any utilities that may need to go through there.
So, whose responsibility with the maintenance of that portion where the gate is?
It will belong to the Homeowners Association.
Any questions from supervisors?
I did have a question, just because I was a little confused on the map.
It didn't show too well.
Well, the, the map that, that we have, this is where the proposed gate is going to be, right?
Correct.
And we didn't have a map of where it had been originally designed-
It was never placed.
Oh, it wasn't?
Because when they came in for-
I got the impression that it had been placed.
No, when they came in for permits, it, it proved to be an inadequate location because of turnarounds and safety issues with the fire department, and also getting electricity to it, so that it could be an automated gate.
I didn't mean physically placed. I, I didn't have a map of where it had been intended.
Oh, I see.
Just to follow up on what David was asking about as far as the maintenance, what kind of a maintenance agreement do we have with the Homeowners Association or the Property Owners Association?
This road upon abandonment would become part of their property to maintain, and their homeowners agreement, homeowners association agreement incorporates all of the roadways within that subdivision.
Okay, to maintain them all to a certain standard, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion at this point. We'll go out to public comment.
I would make a motion to adopt a resolution of the intent to vacate a portion of the county's right-of-way over Surf Sound Court.
Second.
Okay, they've been moved in second. Any public comment on this? Well, seeing no public comment, this is going to be one of our-
One, one last question. Again, then, there was no place to put this gate further up on their own property, where they-
That's correct. Because of, of issues with the fire department getting their units up, and there would be no turnaround if a member from the public knowingly went up that road and didn't have access through there, there would be no way for them to turn around, and-
No, I guess the reason I ask is, is I know how the current condition is now. Seems like they should have done a better job of planning when they did the subdivision. Usually it's incumbent upon the phase of the subdivision to provide this, not to go back on a prior one, and-
That's correct.
Knowing the cast of characters involved up there, it doesn't surprise me, but, don't bite your lip.
I'll go ahead and close public comments, so. Any, any other questions from commissioners, or from supervisors? Okay, Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Okay, going on to item 18. Deny the land use appeal for North State Rendering as it is inconsistent with county code in the condition of approval for minor subdivision MS 1201C as requested by the Assistant Engineer.
Chairman Sullivan, I have to recuse myself. Conflict of interest?
Okay.
North State Rendering did a minor subdivision, and as a condition of the subdivision, we imposed road improvement standards. And their particular parcel is located across, on Lake Earl Drive, across from Standard Vineyard Road. And they've requested that seven through 17 of their conditions be, or appealing them. And the conditions have to do with requirement for plans, paving the driveway approach, concreting the sidewalks, and putting in a storm drain, storm drain system. Staff has recommended the denial of this land use appeal because it is inconsistent with county code. The other major concern is the, the culvert under the existing driveway is near the end of its useful life. If we were to grant them a deferment, there is the potential for that culvert to fail prior to the sidewalk and storm drain system being constructed, and that would be a cost to the county.
Okay. Any questions, supervisors?
No, I, I didn't mind the idea of the drainage problem. That, that would hold me back a little bit from approving.
Do we have the petitioner here to speak on this, or? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
My name is Dick Davis. I think I know all of you. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. Chris Ottoni, who is the President of North State Rendering. They have been operating their business out of, out of Chico for a number of years. They have a facility here across from the old Standard Plywood Mill. They are on leased property right now, and the lease is expiring. What they have planned to do is to stay in Delmar County, and they're asking that the five-acre parcel that they're leasing be approved as a parcel map. The parcel map has been approved by the County Planning Department, but as, as Roseanne stated, the county is required to request in that district that there be curbs, gutters, sidewalk, underground storm sewer, and so forth. I think everyone is aware that that's quite a ways out, and that there, I think I, I left a map with each of you, I hope, a little photo map that showed from North Crest Drive, pardon me, from Washington Boulevard going north on Lake Earl, there's very few little isolated pieces of sidewalk here and there. We're not asking, on behalf of Mr. Ottoni, we're not asking for a waiver of the requirements. We're just asking for a deferment of time until the area has grown enough to warrant such facilities. Right now, there is no proposed change in the land use whatsoever, other than just drawing a line on a parcel map. The state law requires, as does the county law, that we cannot file the parcel map unless all the conditions are met or waived, and, or not, I, I don't mean waived, in this case deferred. And so, we're asking on behalf of Mr. Ottoni, that the, and North Coast Rendering, that the conditions, with the exception of the culvert that Roseanne just spoke of, that the conditions be waived until such time that the area has grown to warrant the facilities. If we were to go with, go ahead with it right now, we have then a sidewalk that's sitting with no connection to a sidewalk in either direction, opposite the front of the property. I think it is something that could be hazardous more than beneficial. I can just imagine someone walking down that short piece of sidewalk during the night with no lighting there and falling into the ditch off of either end, which I think the county could have considerable liability over something like that. It's just a matter, we're asking for a deferment of 10 years or a, or until such time if the area should grow rapidly whenever the county means that those things have to be put in, and that they would be designed at one time as, as is normal for that type of feature. Mitigation wise on this, again, as Roseanne referred to, Mr. Ottoni would be certainly willing to go ahead now and replace the one culvert that is of concern, and do that before the map could be filed. But they cannot receive title to the property until the map is approved and filed in the county records. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Any, any questions?
So, your, your solution would be not to ask for, it sounds like you're offering a compromise, that it's not to ask for elimination of the seven through 17, or the deferment of seven through 17, but actually to take care of the grading and take care of the paving of the driveway and the access and the culvert, just not do the sidewalks at this time?
Well, he was asking, frankly, those all go together there, David, and he's asking for a waiver of all of the construction except that one culvert. He would go ahead and replace that culvert now. The rest of the paving and so forth, the, the road will be changed when the improvements are all put in. And that would go with the paving and the concrete work at that time.
The road isn't going to change out there, just the curbs, gutters, and sidewalks being added on that?
Yes, because right now, they're accessing the property going across Mr. Hetzel's property. They're accessing that, and they have been for the last several years, and that's where that culvert in question is located. And when they go ahead with the curbs, gutters, and so forth, then they would be putting their own road into the property and no longer using that access road through the Hetzel property.
I have a question, Chair Sullivan. If this property changes hands, if the property should sell, what would happen to those deferments and all that? They would go along with the property still?
I think they would, I think they would have to have an agreement with the county.
Would still have those deferments?
Yes.
So, you're talking actually seven through 16, then, because he's going to do 17?
If 17, I'm sorry, I walked off this morning.
No, 17 is the grading drainage plan show include calculation for replacement culvert at the existing drive, the existing culvert is near the end of its useful life. That's-
That's correct.
17, so that's still, that's not one of the ones he's asking for.
I'm sorry, that's correct.
Okay.
How many people does he employ?
I'm guessing at this, I think there's five or six at this location, and I'm not sure how many he has in Chico.
And he's looking to move his Chico operation to here?
No, the Chico operation, I think, is going to stay where it is, but he serves Southern Oregon and Northern California, and so his facility is, is here. There's no plans at this time for any improvements to the property. It's, it's, as I mentioned, it's just going to be a change on a parcel map that would allow them to transfer, take title to the property they've been leasing. Their lease is expiring.
Any other questions for supervisors?
No, I just personally can't see a sidewalk out there in the middle of-
Nowhere.
Yeah. It's not in the middle of nowhere, but-
Well, but I mean that-
But it is out there where there isn't a sidewalk.
That's correct. I, I showed on the little photo map, the sidewalks that exist going north of Washington, and there's very few of them, and it's normally, I do surveys for design of walks and so forth. I don't design them. I'm not a civil. But the, everything I was ever taught in school is you don't do piecemeal on those types of structures of, of concrete particularly. That's the planning of a larger area at one time.
Okay, so, just, I want to make sure we're clear on which ones we're actually talking about the deferment on.
I believe, Mike, if I, I walked off and left my paperwork-
Oh, that's okay, but it's the-
But I think it's, would then be-
So, he's actually asking for a deferment on submit an erosion and runoff control plan to the Engineering Division for review and acceptance. He doesn't want to do that either. It's item number nine.
The planning?
Yeah, on the-
No, sir.
Conditions.
I think we would want to ask that to be deferred, because I truly think that you're going to have to do a considerable amount of planning on that whole area, and not just that sidewalk area.
Okay. Any other questions for supervisors? Okay, any public comment on this? Thanks, thanks, Mr. Davis.
Yes, if you look at in this area, and there is a map on the very back of the staff report that shows what the improvements are in the vicinity, and you'll see that they're very spotty out there. We've, we're very excited about having this, North State, North State Rendering here. We've assisted them through the process, but as you know, the codes don't allow us the availability to grant exceptions. And yes, it's, it's hard to see the sidewalks out in that area, but of course, if, if you don't apply them or, or get them at the time of development or parcel map, they never get there. And so, this spottiness of those improvements, we're waiting a time when we can connect them. Eventually, it will probably require the, the cost of the county to connect all of these areas that have been developed, but that is the reason for the staff recommendation.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, let's bring it back to the board, then. Yes?
I apologize. My name is Ruthie Maloney. I'm the Assistant Self-Governance Director for the Uroch Tribe, and I would like to provide comment on the consent agenda items.
I'm sorry, actually, we're dealing, I, we, we've already passed a consent agenda item?
I, I realized that.
And this is a completely different subject, so if you're, if you want to comment, then I, I would encourage you to do it a little bit later, but we need to finish this item.
Okay, yes.
So, okay. I appreciate that, thank you. Any other public comment on this item on the agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board, and entertain a motion.
You know, it's a tough one. The last time we came up with this issue, which has been years ago, I was opposed to sticking sidewalks out in the middle of nowhere. Didn't make sense. But there have been some more that have been added since then. The, the big blank that you see there going up to Pine Grove School actually has improved with walkways and, and some other buildup of asphalt there, some delineation. So, that road is greatly improved. The thing that really hits me is the best time to do these improvements is when you have a willing buyer and a willing seller, and upon the transfer of properties is even better than the development of a building permit application. I don't see in here an argument regarding cost, that it's an undue hardship that would, that the person would say, please do a deferment. That's not part of the argument. So, part of me says that, you know, if we don't, we started down this road, even though I didn't agree with it in the beginning, and since it is within the urban growth boundary, and that is the way we're trying to get development to go, this is the perfect opportunity to do something like this. I would be concerned, you know, if we didn't do the sidewalk at this time, I still would be concerned with the, the driveway, the, the drainage, and the culvert. And if the argument is that it doesn't make sense to do the drainage unless you're doing, and the culvert unless you're doing the sidewalks and the curbs at the same time, then I would weigh in the side of, well, then maybe it's time to do the sidewalks and, and the curbs. It is a direction, it's not as, as obvious, say, when Delmar Disposal went out there, and there was nothing, and all of a sudden, you know, the argument was, what are you going to do? Ride your bicycle out there, or, and then get out of your, and then, then get on the sidewalk and walk down the sidewalk for a couple of hundred feet, and then get off and get back on your bike? I mean, that's how ridiculous it was. But, that's, that's changing out there. So, I'm not so sure that the case has been made for the deferment.
Leslie, any comments?
I'd, I'd look at a compromise of some sorts, but I don't see that there either.
That's what I was looking for, is a compromise.
I mean, if they want to put off the, the curbs, if you can put off the curbs and gutters and not affect the drainage, that, fine, I'm not sure you can do that. Putting off the sidewalk, yeah, you know, but, and I'd-
Can I speak?
Yeah.
I'm not certain that I, I really apologize, because I walked off quickly and left my, all my notes sitting on my desk this morning. The drainage, I don't think we would have a problem with, as far as this, that's going to be done. The county has requested a drainage plan for the property, and that will be done. So, that, that is a situation that we're not trying to have postponed. I think that is, if I did not include that correctly in the number of items there.
I, I think the, the only thing that I've heard so far, though, is, is the sidewalks are the only one that kind of makes sense that maybe that would be deferred, that so far. I mean, is, is it, like- I mean, is, is it, like Supervisor Finnegan, is it an undue hardship to, I mean, is it going to prevent him from setting up shop at that point, or?
That frankly is one thing that I did not bring up, but it is, yes.
Oh, it is?
It's one thing that they had asked for, because it was undue hardship at this time, and I think all of us recognize the conditions of our economy right now, and it's, every business is trying to keep costs under control. But as far as the drainage is concerned, the drainage plan for the entire property, that, that will be done. That we're not asking for deferment on that.
It's actually with.
But that's in item number eight, which was included in the seven through.
I'm sorry, then, that's my error. It should not be in there. It was, it was all of the concrete structures, the sidewalks, the curbs, the gutters, the underground storm drains, that's, that's the portion. There, I, I'm leaving that the paving that being, that is being talked about would be the paving that he would be putting in when he puts his new road into his own property, and that would be done at the time of the sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
As a condition of the subdivision that was done, why wasn't it a condition that when the parcel was created, that there be an access for each one of those parcels, or is there?
There is one. There is a recorded access, and he has an access going in through the Hetzel property and to the property that he's using.
But is that something that was a condition that he should have done, or should be doing? Is that something we needed to address, or he needed to address? In other words, was it something that was deferred? We allowed it because it was a lease, but one is, it's a?
It was approved by the county, or approved by the, the planning department to use that as the access to the property. He doesn't care to do that in the long term. He would like to put in his own access to the property.
You know, the compromise I'm looking at is, is, is if there is some sort of a deferment for the sidewalk, which, again, I was opposed to before, but I'm leaning towards doing it all now, because now's the perfect time when you're negotiating the purchase of a piece of property, and that's how you calculate the value. Now's the perfect opportunity. Later on, it's not. He's going to have to, you know, he's going to have to come up with the money himself, not try to compromise with the willing buyer and a willing seller. I mean, it really is the perfect time to do everything. He has more assets to draw from. But under no circumstances would I vote to defer the drainage improvements, the culverts, any improvements to that access, not the new access, but the existing access, if that was required.
Well, as I mentioned.
And I think you did mention that the.
The culvert would be put in at this time.
And the drainage.
And the drainage, not the drainage structures, just the drainage plan.
Right.
The drainage plan, yes.
The engineering.
Okay. Do you have a comment?
I have a question for clarification. Are we, are we saying that if the sidewalks were deferred, we're just going to go with one or two driveways? Because two driveways were a condition of the permit.
I don't think we've said anything yet so far. We're trying to figure out exactly what, if, if there is a compromise in here, otherwise it sounds like we're in different places altogether right now. Well, at this point, I will entertain a motion, unless supervisors have another question or comment, or?
Well, I'd like to hear some direction from staff, hearing the conversation here of what proposed compromise might be that would be acceptable, keeping in mind that we don't want to have improvements deferred that are safety and that make sense.
That makes it rough. Obviously, you have the power to grant a deferment or, or to change these conditions, but the conditions are by code, and my thought is, after hearing this, is I can understand they want to defer sidewalk, but perhaps the drainage structures may need to be there, and if so, that's curb and gutter. It makes no sense to do curb and gutter and not sidewalks at this time. We do have a concern about the entrance. Right now, there is a, I think there's an easement granted to the neighbors so that they can enter off the neighbor's property, but there is the right of way there to, to have an entrance, there's a require that there, a requirement that there be even an alternate entrance for fire safety. That, I don't know if that's important at this point in time, but that was some of the things that staff was struggling with in trying to reach a recommendation to you, and, well, for us, it was easy, because the code indicated that we didn't have any leeway, so we just required what was based on the code and then come to you for direction on, on further. But if, if we grant a deferment for the drainage structures, I think that that's going to be a significant compromise, and I think we'd have to make that compromise in order to grant a deferment on the sidewalk. Now, you do have the, the power to do that, if, if so does our, I'm glad to hear that they're not wanting to defer the maintenance on the culvert, because that's something that needs, that needs attention right away.
Okay, thank you.
And then what about if we're, were to defer the curbs and gutters there, and not the, not the engineering on the drainage, but the actual physicality of it? And there was to, is there a way to trigger it sooner if it, if there's a flood event, or if, if there's an erosion there in that ditch? I mean, do we have a history of a problem there that needs to be addressed?
I don't know if there would be an automatic trigger. There, there might be something written that indicates that it would, that the deferment could be ended at the county's request during that ten-year period, so that there, if there is some sort of a flood event or something, that we could at our discretion at any time end the deferment.
Okay, I like that.
Okay. I guess there's a couple of different ways that we can hear, yes.
Jeff's the one that cleans those ditches.
I, I just have to say one thing about that particular drainage is, about fifteen years ago, we upsized the, the pipes that, that are underneath those driveways once already, and they've already reached their capacity. So the drainage is definitely an issue. Everybody wants to drain their property, and they always want to drain it to the county ditch, which is fine, until the ditch isn't big enough, and that's where we have flooding of roads. So that's just one thing to keep in mind on, on this particular.
Okay, so how would these improvements take care of that situation?
They would have to increase the size of the diameter of the pipe that's under the driveways.
Okay, but that could be a condition without doing the sidewalks?
Yes.
Well, I'd make a motion to direct staff to come back with.
Do we need a motion or just direction to staff?
Well, I guess I'd like to make, I don't know, do we, I think I'd probably like to see it and see that the, their concurrence, that the applicant's in concurrence with it, but to reflect a deferment simply on the concrete work, that the drainage study will be done, that the culvert improvements will be done. And that there be the caveat that this can be triggered at the request of the county for safe and healthy issues or a flood event.
Okay.
And I would like to see this cleaned up a little bit, being said, we're not going to include item number eight or item number sixteen, was it?
Well, he's not, he's not asking for defer on those things. Those things are going to get taken care of.
Well, they did in this request, but verbally, they're not. That's the engineering.
So maybe we can give direction to staff to go back, talk to the applicant, and then bring it back to the next board meeting.
If the focus is to be sidewalks, understanding that curbs and gutters go with it, if you're not having curbs and gutters to have an orderly drain there and upsizing the culvert, which has to be done anyway at this time, then show us that it can be done.
It makes sense that there's been some changes here this morning verbally, and it makes sense that we show those and that we have those in a definite agreement, especially if we're going to look at the ability to terminate the deferment at, at some flood event during the ten-year period. We'd be glad to do that.
Any other, and, and this doesn't go to, this is just a little advice, but to their agents, go back to them and to explain that, you know, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to do it now than it's going to be to do it in ten years, and having the sale and transfer of property is a perfect opportunity to negotiate those improvements out of the way right now. They might, might be in their best interest.
So, okay, so item eighteen is, is more direction to staff to bring it back to the board, once, once compromise has been reached or it's been cleaned up? Yeah. Okay, so we're going to jump into, since we're twenty-five minutes past the, the point, we're going to go to.
Supervisor Sullivan, can I ask you to get some public input?
Yeah, we're going to do that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, that's, we're going to open public comment. Oh, we haven't opened that yet, so, that's what I'm talking about, so. Item fourteen, public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and please give your name and, and where you're from into the microphone, and at this point, if you want to, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Ruthie Maloney. I'm the Assistant Self-Governance Director for the Uroch Tribe, and I'm here, again, I apologize for the consent agenda, as you guys skipped, and I was like, oh.
Well, we didn't skip it, we voted on it already.
Oh, okay, so I just want to make the comment anyway, on item number six, for the agreement with the California Department of Social Services Community Care Licensing Division for period July one through June thirty of two thousand and fourteen. The Uroch Tribe would like, is interested in providing input on this contract because of the high number of Native American children that we do have in the Del Norte County Child Welfare System, and we've had a few issues with getting our families to have the licensing process, and I noticed in the contract also that they didn't recognize ICWA, that's the Indian Child Welfare Act, and also they, in the contract, it did not, we'd like to have a quick response, time needed for background checks for our tribal specified homes, and we also would like to see ICWA included, but also the, for training purposes, we'd like to have cultural competency training for their new employees, as well as to see just some tribal input on this, this issue. And that's for number six. The other item I wanted to make a comment on is the number eight, which is the contract between County of Del Norte and Drake Haglen and Associates about Hunter Creek Bridge replacement. I noticed in the contract that they did not have anything that referred to the Tribal Employment Rights Ordinance. We'd like that if they are on the, working on the, on the reservation, that we would have a tariff permit, that's what we have, so we just didn't see that recognized in that contract. That's the second one. The third item was number eleven, which is the approval of the memorandum of understanding between County of Del Norte and Resigini Rancheria. We just noticed that there wasn't a map that was included, because we also have a, a road inventory for the Uroch Tribe, and we just wanted to make sure that it didn't have any conflicting issues with our inventory.
Yeah, and I'm sure staff can provide the map on, on the roads at, at, you know, request from you on that. I think the other item, and I'll have to get corrected on that, item six, it basically is the state is taking over the licensing, is that the way I read that?
No, that, they're authorizing us.
Oh, they're authorizing.
That would be the alternative. And I would just, again, on that, good communication between the tribe and the Director of Health and Human Services, Gary Blatnick. Has there been any communication there?
Not that I know of, I'm just kind of getting started with this, so you'll see me often, I'm sure.
Well, and that's, so, I would, I would ask you to do that. Go introduce yourself and have that talk, and, and I don't think there's an issue there. I think great communication would come out of it and working together. As far as the Hunter Creek Bridge, I know that it is also part of the Uroch Tribal Road System.
Yes.
And there should be constant dialogue going back and forth there early on, and you might check and see that, in fact, that that hasn't happened, and, and how to encourage it more in the future. And the same goes, Resigini, obviously, will get, they should have provided us with a road inventory.
Yes.
But it's sort of like, my initial blush on that is, the roads that are within the Uroch Tribal System are also county roads and within the county system, and it's just a way of piggybacking on each other's road system that benefits us both.
Yes.
And I would think that if Resigini was there, it's not a standalone, we're still all in this together, and it can only benefit us all, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Yes?
Howdy, I'm Roy Bieber, and something's bothered me for quite a while in Del Norte County, and I'm just coming to you to see if there might be something we could do about it. And these, that's these outside contractors coming in, hiring no local help, we're a good illustration, the fifty-eight units behind Ace Hardware, I haven't found one person that has worked on that project. They bring them all in from out of town, take the money out of Del Norte County, the quit, or the local lumberyard that I contacted, haven't sold them one board. They get it all out of the area. Witnessed a sheet rock truck coming in with Oregon plates that puts up a red flag, is sales tax paid or not? And I think we should protect the Del Norte people a little bit, and this is just one indication. I was at Walmart the other day, they're going to want us to go in their new store, aren't they? But a truck comes from Eureka delivering plywood. Now, come on. If you want us to walk into your door, help us out, too. Another good illustration was in the city, the fantastic sewer plant we have, there's about over two hundred thousand dollars worth of cabinetry in there. We have good cabinet people in Del Norte County, never had one opportunity to get, get the job. Now, do you think, now, is it possible to say that if a contract is given in Del Norte County, twenty percent, or fifteen, or some magic number of the workforce has to be Del Norte people?
I think one of the, the issues we've talked about, because I brought that up as point of sale, is using Del Norte's point of sale, and I've talked to CDD and the contract had already been basically signed at that point for, and voted on by the board, but that is an important thing for us to, even as easy as the, the builder using us as the point of sale, irregardless of where they buy it in California, that means the sales tax would come back here, especially in a project that, that size, that's going to be, going to be built there.
Yeah, there's a lot of money involved here, and, you know, what we're doing is we're hiring outside people to come in and build a place so that low rental, rental people can sit on their butt and not work. I mean, it isn't nice to say it that way, but that's what's happening. And if we can protect our Del Norte people and get them involved with the work, working on it, I, I'll say one thing about the stimulus money, they spent that all, and they hired all these people to paint curbs and all of that, that, that really worked, I think, and it was good for the county. What is it, they say a dollar turns over seven times? Well, how many seven times did we get out of that fifty-eight units? And that's the second phase, and I hear there's a third phase going in, is that correct?
Not at this time, it's not.
Not at this time, but eventually, and then they'll bring in everybody from Medford again to build it, if we don't do something about it.
You know, Roy, your daughter-in-law brought this before, the city council and the Board of Supervisors before about.
And the school board.
And the school board, trying to.
Well, you mean Angelina's thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Harbor Board passed it, the school district passed it, the Board of Supervisors didn't, because they had to do the budget first.
The Board of Supervisors did pass.
Then why don't we enforce it?
It, it's not, it was for public projects on that one, Mr. Bieber. There's, there's certain other restrictions that we can't dabble in on private business, too, but the, they did pass that, yes. The exact same ordinances that the city passed.
Is the harbor in that?
Yeah, I believe so.
They passed it, but they can't enforce it on the, like, the fifty-eight units?
I would defer to county council to give you a better explanation, maybe after the meeting, and what's changed in that, but there were certain things that were unconstitutional that had to be changed.
Yeah.
But yes, she brought that forward, and the board did pass that.
Oh, well, she's my daughter-in-law, and she didn't think that they ever passed it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I worked directly with her on that one.
Okay, all right, fine.
But I, I guess my point was that the Board of Supervisors has better control over public projects than the private projects. The public projects that are run through the county.
Well, they sure control the private, Jay, I mean, I was a contractor, and they controlled me.
Their permit, yes, but they don't necessarily.
We never told you who you had to hire. I don't think we ever told you who you had to hire, Roy.
No, but you told me where to do it and when to do it.
But the one thing that I do recall, Mr. Bieber, is I never did ask you to go to any particular business, and that was what the issue was. It's, it's dabbling in telling people where they can and can't go. That was a big issue.
I imagine there's a fine line here, but there should be something we could do to help the Del Norte merchants, I mean.
Well, and I think point of sale is an excellent thing that we are working on and will come to fruition.
And just for informational purposes, we've worked with the Harbor District in regards of that Harbor job and getting wording in there for point of sale for Del Norte County.
For the new job coming up?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, I was just very concerned about this, and, you know. So, I was just very concerned about this, and, you know, going further than that, our high school doesn't even have a vocational class anymore, so people can go to work.
And that would be a great thing, bring up the School Board meeting.
That's right. I have.
I'm on the same page as you on that.
I had the carpentry program the one time, you know, we build a house every two years. Well, it took eight years to build the last one. That teaches kids to be lazy.
All right. All right, thanks.
Okay. But if there's anything at any time I could do or anything to try to help the workforce in Del Norte County get some work, get some jobs, this is ridiculous. They spend beer money, I guess, but otherwise, what else do we, they spend money in Del Norte County for?
Well, working through the Builders Exchange is a great place to start as well.
I don't think we have one anymore.
We don't?
I think that went defunct.
Well, I know, Mr. Bieber, and I've discussed this before also. And it's something else that I know we don't have any control over. And with meeting our housing element and all that, we have certain rules we have to follow. But I also have a big complaint with the fact that they can come in here, build a project, make money every month on the rents and never pay property tax.
Yeah. I guess they did have to buy sewer laterals. I checked into that, and they did have to buy sewer laterals. I mean, it even bothers me that COs live in Oregon, make their money in California. I mean, I think we got to look out for California a little bit sometimes. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Bieber.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would like to know, and I don't know who has the answer to this, whether it's somebody from CDD or CAO, but Mr. Bieber brought up a good point on sales tax. How do we know that those loads from Oregon that are coming in for building projects are, the sales taxes being paid on?
Right, and if they're delivered here, they have to be.
Yeah, if it's for a project here, they have to pay sales tax.
Yes, with sales tax here, and also with the condition that we're going to be working on, on the point of sale, means the point of sale is here, regardless of who they buy him from.
Well, I'm not talking about in the future when we have a point of sale here. I'm talking about right now. When they bring, when they bring a truckload of sheet rock or a truckload of lumber or a truckload of concrete in from Oregon, how do we know the sales tax is being paid on that?
I'm not sure. Do you have any thoughts, County Council, with regards to how we can verify that?
We'd have to get some sort of verification from the developer themselves, that they're actually paying, some sort of paperwork that they're filing with the Board of Equalization or something, showing that they're paying this sales tax.
Board of Equalization, we can ask through the assessor, probably, huh? To ask for verification of those receipts?
I don't think it's a different branch of Board of Equalization.
Is it?
But however, I do know that.
Louise, you might want to come, you might want to come to the mic, just so the audience knows.
I have talked to contractors in the past that have actually purchased materials in Oregon, and they had a representative from State Board of Equalization that came out to ask for their receipts, and when they didn't have them, then they were fined. And so, I think the best approach would be to talk to State Board of Equalization, to have their representation on the tax side to come up and to monitor the project.
So, we can direct staff and County Council to pursue that, because that is revenue to pay for services that are not coming into the county right now. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. We're going to go to another timed item that's almost half hour past. Item 15, 1045, which was at 1045. Adjourn as the Board of Supervi, we're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors, reconvene as the Board of Equalization and conduct a public hearing to consider an assessment appeal, Rite Aid Inc., parcel number 118-110-23. So, at this point, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you wish to speak at this hearing, please step over to the front table and use the sheet provided to sign your name and address for the record. When the hearing is opened, you will have five, excuse me, you'll have three minutes to speak, and we would appreciate your using the microphone so that all may hear your testimony. So, we're going to go ahead and start with Staff Department. Go ahead if you want to swear a man.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter now pending before this Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, my name's Steve Hart, and I'm with the Del Norte County Assessor's Office. Okay, Rite Aid Incorporated filed a change of assessment application for the 0910, 1011, and the 1112 roll. The values in dispute are the land and improvements only. The stipulations were prepared and signed in accordance with Revenue and Taxation Code 1607. And the cost approach was not utilized in this appraisal due to no comparable sales to derive a land value. The market approach was not utilized due to lack of comparable sales. The income approach was deemed to be the appropriate method to value this property. Rite Aid provided the assessor's office with their income and expense information for the roll years involved. They also provided some comparable rental, retail rental information. One information I did find, plus the information provided, allowed for a reasonable estimate of market rent. The cap rates used were found through a publication called Realty Rates. And below is a breakdown of the changes to the assessed value. You can look at that. And then per Revenue and Taxation Code 1607, the Board may accept the stipulation or reject the stipulation and set a hearing date. The next page is just the calculations I used to get to the values. The next page after that on the right is kind of a breakdown of a simple income approach. And then what I did, I did work the improvements up, including in a cost approach, just to see where the improvements would lay, but not having comparable sales in the land, I couldn't put the cost and that together. So, that's why I did use the income approach. And then the back pages are the signed stipulations. And do we have any questions?
Yeah, on the calculations, you used the same gross income for all three years?
Yes, there, the expenses changed a little, but with their contract rents, I used on this one, the preferred approach is a straight market income and expenses, but with this, there was not a whole lot of data available that pertained to Del Norte County. Some of the stuff I had pertained to larger counties. They came from Rite Aid's and larger stores, but they were not from Del Norte County. So, this calculation here is kind of a hybrid of their actual expenses and some market data. So, under the contract rents they had, they had not changed for the years. What did change in the calculations were their expenses went up and down.
Why couldn't you get information for Del Norte County, Rite Aid?
There's not a whole lot available. I did some of it, you know, for retail, Rite Aid did provide it. So, I do have some retail rental information. Yeah, so, yeah, what our office would do, we would do a survey of all the rental, but it's, we don't have a whole lot going. So, some of the best information I have did come from Rite Aid itself. They supplied me with their rental information for like the restaurant and State Farm and the video store. So, it is kind of locally derived.
Okay. Questions from Supervisors?
So, yeah, if I'm reading this right, they start out at a value, and I'm just going to pick on the land for, for right now. And for, for 910, the value on the roll was 5,496,000. And then in 1011, it went down to 1.9. Is that right? And then, and then it stayed the same in 1112?
It looks like they flip-flopped land and improvements.
That's why I was looking in the file on there. They did flip-flop the land and improvements. Because obviously, they did look a little high. So, I don't know if they did that for all.
They did it for two of them, yeah.
For the last two, for 1011, 1112.
So, that's basically, on the roll is the basis that was agreed to. And we're being asked to rule on a stipulated value, which leaves the basis the same. To where if the values ever came up, that's what it would adjust back to.
Yes, these are just.
So, I guess what I'm getting at then is, since it's already been acknowledged what that basis is, the 7 million, whatever, when times get good, it'll go back to.
Yeah, these are not, these are not permanent adjustments. These would be under Proposition 51.
The first time they asked that, 4.4, then down to 4 million, then now to 2.2, that's their request for stipulated value only? They think that that should be the basis?
That was their request for that roll. I don't know if they really think that should be the permanent. I think they believe that's not a permanent adjustment to the roll, because they will file an appeal every year. So, they understand that it can fluctuate back up to the factor base year.
But the way it's filled out, they're asking for a permanent adjustment. No?
Okay. Ready? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter now pending before this Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
What is happening is, is that was their request, the 4 million or whatever. Since that time between the two, between our office and them, we have discussed what reality was. And they have agreed on these stipulated values. Instead of the 4,000, or, excuse me, 4 million, we have, let's see, for 910, it was 4,400,000. We stipulated to $6 million.
Right.
And that is only for that year. We go in every year and make a determination of value, so this is a cast in stone.
Okay, so the stipulated value went from 6 million to 5 and 1/2 to 5, or 5 is, I think, is what you're recommending this year?
Yes, because values have gone down.
So, what there, it was not clear to me that the applicant's opinion of value, whether they're asking for a change in the basis or just in the stipulated value.
The stipulated value.
I actually find it sort of humorous, they think that their stipulated value for land and improvements is only 2.2 million dollars.
Yes.
Get some investors to write them a check.
Exactly. A lot of times, they just put anything on there and go with the flow, you know, and there's a lot of negotiation between when they hand these in and when we actually come to some type of stipulation.
So, has there been a negotiated stipulation of value of the $5 million that's agreed to by Rite Aid?
Yes.
Yes.
All of, the stipulated values for 910, the $6 million, the 1011 for 5,500,000, and 1112 for 5, I mean, excuse me, million dollars, have been stipulated. They do agree that they feel that that is the value.
Then I guess my final question is, if it's already been negotiated and agreed to, why are we doing this here today?
Because we have to, according to Revenue and Taxation Code 1607, we have to have the approval of the Board for the stipulated values.
So, could you just come forward and ask for a validation of a stipulated agreement that's already been negotiated? That's what you're doing, I guess?
Yes, because you have the option of saying, no, we don't want to go with the stipulated values. We would, we feel that we want to have a full court hearing.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Okay. Any, let me open up. Any other questions, the staff? Okay, at this point, all public comment. Okay, I see no public comment. I'll bring it back to the Board.
I would move that we accept the negotiated stipulated value at $5 million for the factor base year value, 7,487,128,000 for the years 1112.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved second. Any other comments, questions?
Does that have to be done for all three years?
I would think yes, because, yeah, we have three, we have three.
Okay, I thought you'd already agreed on a stipulated value for '09 and '10.
No, these are all, these are all together.
All three of these.
This is all, all three rolls together.
Okay. There's a stipulated negotiated value from '09, 10 at 6 million, 1011 at 5.5 million, and 1112 at 5 million, with the corresponding factor base year of '09, 10, 7.448827, 1011, 7.43172, and 1112, 7.487128.
And I will amend my second to include those.
Okay. Any other comments from?
And it makes no difference that this, that these applications were filled out wrong? This, that has nothing.
The numbers transposed.
That has nothing to do with the stipulation we're doing now?
No, it does not. I think in the future, we'll have a little, we'll have it filled out correctly.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Jeremy, could you please call the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are, at this point, we're down to item 19. Considerable legislative and budget matters pertinent to the County of Del Norte, authorize the Chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
I think you have to adjourn and recommit.
Oh, sorry, I will adjourn as the Board, we'll adjourn this Board as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. At this point, we'll consider pertinent legislative matters.
I reported a little bit earlier that we're preparing to begin the individual budget meetings with each department. Those will start, I believe it's going to be April 24th, and we hope to have those finished within two weeks. The Board is aware, we sit down with each department and go through their individual requested budget and try to come up with something that is indicative of what the conditions are economically, as well as what the needs are and services are that need to be provided by that department. And then we will form a recommended budget to be brought before the Board before the 30th of June. Follow up with that through October, which is our final date. So, we'll start that process, and so you will see us in closed or backdoor meetings there with the individual departments, so that we can get those hashed out before they bring a recommendation to the Board. Legislatively, the legislative platform that the Board passed, we've had some letters that have gone out to federal legislators regarding appropriations and such. Greg Burns has been the lead on those. I believe there's also been some action through Peterson at the state level with that, getting that document to anybody that might be making a decision on something that could affect Del Norte County. So, that's been a real positive, that we passed that a month ago or so. Speaking of Van Scoyak, Greg Burns is planning a trip to Del Norte County in late May, probably the second meeting in May, and will report to the Board on a number of different issues and try to coordinate with the Board if there are any instances when a member or staff may be in Washington, DC to sit down. I think Supervisor Finnegan is the person who he met with the last time, and he plugged your schedule full.
He did.
Outside of the actual trip that he made for, I think it was CSAC or NACO at that time.
It's always beneficial. It was, we got an hour with the FAA regarding strategy for the airport for funding and how to maximize our efforts and planning there. Got us on the list, or got me in the office that got us on the list for the harbor dredging. The money was there, nobody realized we weren't on the right list. So, Greg has been a major asset, and then, of course, met with the Colonel and got us a few more million dollars down there when we went to San Francisco. So, great asset, and I'm, I wish that we would have more cooperation from our fellow governance partners in the harbor and in the city, because I know that the federal efforts are needed there as well, so.
The, yeah, he's maximized time for anybody that's been back there, whether it's been Board members or any other delegate from Del Norte County. If they've been in there and they've needed his assistance, he's gotten them through the door to talk to representatives at the federal level, which has been a real plus. Like I mentioned, I know when David was back there, his schedule was plugged full in between his normal schedule, trying to get him into these different representatives. And he's, Greg is also talking right now, trying to piggyback off of other trips that are paid by other entities to be able to get people back there and do that, too. SRS is one of the ones that's on his, as a priority of his, that he's trying to bring forward, I think, the way he describes it, he wants to just, to get a good description from a rural. from a rural county on what the effect is of losing that SRS. And for Del Norte County's purposes, many of the roads that serve our forests are county roads, and those will be the first to be de-prioritized because we also have all of the other county roads to address. So if that money goes away, those roads will go away because obviously, you're going to have to prioritize staffing, you're gonna have to prioritize everything. Exact, you know, like the road priority list today, most of those roads are going to be serving the majority of the people. And those rural roads are, they're key for the forest survival also, and their management. So it'll be important to get our word to those delegates to make them understand what it really means when they provide that money to our local road department.
And you're really gonna hear about it when we meet with Curry County, because that's general fund money for them. You're looking at laying off police officers, closing schools, closing libraries, going bankrupt. It's gonna be ugly.
And as long as we're tying these things all in, you know, these, the issue of the Hurdy Gurdy Creek acquisition, the SRS money, the travel management plan, you know, all of those affect Del Norte County in a huge way. And I think we need to weigh in, we need to put a lot of emphasis on what that does when they take property off the tax rolls, whether it's the Hurdy Gurdy Creek acquisition or whether they eliminate roads. Whatever they're doing up there affects Del Norte County in an adverse way. And I think we need to weigh in on that. I think, I'd like to see some sort of letter, maybe come back to the board on the next agenda, if we could.
Or even an opt-ed.
Well, if you're talking about tax, let's really incorporate our big partner there, which is schools.
Yep.
Exactly.
Half of that tax dollars is loss of revenue for schools, and they've not.
In both the acquisition and in the SRS money.
Yep.
So like I say, that, you know, there's a double or triple impact there that continues to hit us over and over again. And I think we need to weigh in very heavily. We've got a no net loss policy and, and I think.
Well, I think the public needs to understand that no net loss policy was put in place to protect the county. It's not just out of spite. It was put in place for a financial reason, is we are being squeezed every time land, for whatever purpose comes off the tax rolls, it affects us directly. And I think the school district understands it affects them harder than it's gonna affect us. And we, you know, the more partners we have in the process, there has to be mitigation, there has to be offset. It's an unfortunate, all we've seen so far is all the blessings of Hurdy Gurdy going off the tax rolls, but the hardcore negative is, is the community's gonna get hit hard. As a county, we don't have very much left to cut. We're skin and bones at this point, and if you've taken more dollars off the tax roll, no matter how small they think it is, it's having, it's having a multiplier effect on the community. So I, it's not just a philosophical thing, it is a hardcore financial, basic needs and services in the community that the county has to provide. And we're, you know, if this continues, we will be making some hard decisions.
While you're getting that message out to the public through this, they need to also understand that it's not just from those sources that we lose the property off the tax rolls, it's also through tribal lands.
It's a frank discussion that needs to, it needs to happen because as a community, we can't continue to have this happen. It's, there is not enough tax land base, basically.
I spoke with Greg last night in regards to both Hurdy Gurdy and SRS, and I also got an email this morning from one of their other staff members, and they're actually following up on both of those. And I'll get a little bit more detail to them and talk about some alternatives, letters or otherwise, and discuss how to better get our point across to any of the legislators that may be opposed to SRS. There are some out there that are in different states that have different conditions, and I don't think they fully recognize what this means to other states. That's the point that we have to get across to them also. So I'll work with him directly. And then we'll see him, I think it'll be the second meeting in May, and he can give you a full report.
Is there, is there any SRS events coming up at all in DC?
No, not.
There's none planned so far. Okay, any other items? Okay, so at this point, we'll go ahead and adjourn.